And if you would join me in the flag suite.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And the one item we have on the agenda this evening is a quarterly report, quarterly update on the Manhattan Regional Airport. And then to review parking improvements. And Jesse Romo, the Director of the Manhattan Airport, is here to make the presentation for us and make other introductions as appropriate.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity.
I don't have that here.
Right, I am the lone item on the agenda, but I am not a one-man show. I brought reinforcement with me and will be introducing our consultants here on the project from Olson Associates and Walker to help us discuss the parking project. But let's start with the update from the airport and just go through some highlights since the last time we met, which was on March 20th earlier this year. We've done a lot of community engagement. We try to get creative as possible in our partnerships and putting our name and brand out there. One of the things that we did, and this was through encouragement of our Airport Advisory Board, was partnering with Girls on the Run and we did a 5K on May 5th this year. It was their biggest 5K yet. This group is growing across the region, so they're not just a Manhattan group, which fit just in line with what we are as an airport, which serves a regional community. We also tied it in with a general aviation flying event on the other side of the field. So we had a lot of good activity there and good publicity for the airport. We also do all kinds of trade shows and fairs. We were at the Riley County Fair, working with the city's tent, as well as being a sponsor of Military Families Appreciation Dinner. And we've done other conferences, such as the most recent one here, the Manhattan Chamber Showcase, and the regional conference, Philadellos Regional Conference earlier this year. As you can see on the right side there, our picture of our displays that we have for our booth setup. So we get a lot of good visibility and get good interaction with the customers, especially like something at Business Showcase with our customers being 60% travel related or business travel related, is a good opportunity for us to engage with them. We do training across the board all year long to get a lot of utilization in our conference room. This one there, the picture on the left, is our annual required airport emergency planning. And that one, we do in concert with Riley County Emergency Management Services. A lot of different agencies from FBI to RCPD to folks from Fort Riley come and participate in these meetings. There is a lot of people standing too behind that group. On the right, I originally, you know, added this as a shameless plug for myself because training and development, I spent about eight, nine months working on a professional accreditation. And I was able to attain that a few months back. But also gives me an opportunity to talk a little bit about the gentleman in the picture. The one on the far left is Brad Christopher, the Assistant Director of Airports for Wichita. He served as my mentor during the whole process and he's been a great ally and resource for us as we move through security upgrades and other challenges we have across the board. But the gentleman to my left, his name is Victor White. Victor is the Director of Airports and just this past weekend, he suffered a massive heart attack. And so Victor, we're keeping him in our thoughts and prayers. His whole family been in contact, you know, via Facebook, watching the updates, trying to figure out what's going on. But Victor's a great guy, a great friend, and so just thought I'd mention that. So thoughts and prayers to Victor and his family. Moving on to projects, this one here, we got completed. We talked about the Pylon Sun in the past. The image on the left is the artist rendering. And then the center and right are the daytime and nighttime pictures of the actual finished product. And so right now, we have already issued the little agreements with, I shouldn't say little agreements, but they're agreements with our tenants for them to advertise their space up there. So by the next time we all meet, we should have all the advertising up in those slots. I apologize, I've been fighting my sinuses and they've been draining like crazy, so my voice cuts in and out. Another one is the Terminal Office space inside the terminal there where we had the white box dedicated for food service originally. And we looked at alternative uses of it. And we're converting it to TSA office and most recently you all passed or gave us the authority to accept the notice received when we get it from the GSA to move forward on the project so they can reimburse us on a lot of additional expenses and requirements that they had on it. And so we're still waiting for that. Sometimes, you know, moving at the speed of federal government just takes a little bit of time. We also discussed runway project last time too. And we did receive the planning grant from the FAA. We will have our first kickoff meeting August 20th. And that is a pretty big committee that comes together as part of that whole planning effort as we evaluate all the construction alternatives of reconstructing our primary commercial service runway. That study is supposed to take 12 months. And then from there, we anticipate then next year getting a design grant and then having construction phased out over two years in 2020 and 2021. Talk a little bit about air service and employments. So 2017 was a record year for us. We had over 65,000 employments and those are only airline employments. That doesn't include charter from military or from athletic charters, which account for a little over 3,000 more. But 65,000 commercial employments, so far every month in 2018, we have beaten every month in 2017. And if we keep up this pace, and you can see the columns on the right-hand side, even if we finish out the year matching 2017, we're going to get very close to having 70,000 employments by the end of the year, which is a huge number for us. Contributing to that is American Airlines added service to Chicago the month of July. We had our third daily flight out there. And we can see that our employments kicked up quite a bit. In that 2018 column, you'll see that July finished with close to 6,500. But two months prior to that, in May, we had 6,700. And that's kind of the kickoff to a lot of summer travel. April, we got a pretty good kick in there too. One of the things to note is the load factors. So while our employments are growing, and you can see the numbers there on the percentage increases, the load factors vary depending on how many flights and what size aircraft are being brought in. So at times when the capacity is expanding faster than the employments, it looks like we have a load factor drop. But overall, the employments in our market growth is pretty steady and going upwards.
Is there a number where the airlines start to get concerned about the load factor? Even if employments are increasing, if the load factor gets too low, do they cut flights typically?
I don't know what that magic number is, but let me respond to it and kind of take a different angle on that. So one of the magic numbers we've been talking about quite a bit, when we have the question, when can we get a new airline or more flights? We say, you know, at a 73, 75% load factor, we're making good money for the airline. If we're at 80% load factors in that 80 percentile, then we're showing that our market can sustain additional growth and more capacity. If we start dropping below that 70 percentile, they'll start evaluating things. I don't know where that cutoff is, but it's going to be somewhere well below 70%.
Got it.
We see other markets a little bit smaller than ours, comparable regionals, that start getting cuts when they start dropping quite a bit more. So where we are now, we're actually in great shape. Even though the load factors drop, you can see the two lowest months were 70%. And so we're staying above 70. And for the first time that I've seen, in May and June of this year, we reached 80%. And so we're doing very well as a market. So well, in fact, that American is starting to sell seats to a third flight to Chicago in November. So we don't have the official schedule yet for those months, but when they do come out, we'll forward them out. But for now, we're seeing that return.
Thank you.
And with more people flying, it means more people are parking. And so we were looking at our parking lots in July and we were just overwhelmed with how many vehicles were out there. We started putting out the social media alerts, saying, hey folks, you know, you're going to have to spend a little bit more time driving around the lot looking for a stall. And so we said, you know, how did we compare this year versus last? And just looking at the two Julys, in 2018, we averaged 78%. In 2017, last year, it was 68%. So 10% increase is pretty huge for us. And those percentages really too are, you know, it's fuzzy numbers, so to speak, because we have gravel lots that are estimated. And in July, when we had 91%, the gravel lot, our biggest one that we have, was really overflowing. And so us counting empty stalls and kind of creating a percentage that way, I think that percentage was probably higher than what it was. But being a gravel lot is hard to predict. At any rate, we're still, a 10% increase over last year. The highest percentage day, and this was just kind of funny coincidental, in 17 and 18, we're both July 26th, so something about the end of July, we have pretty good numbers. But in 17, you can see it was 78% full and 18, we hit 91%. And then when we look back and look throughout the entire calendar year, we said, wow, actually spring break was our biggest parking capacity there at 94%. So we've had a lot of, a lot of records set for our parking and employments. And with that, we're kind of predicting ahead that with the third flight coming back, with the holiday coming up, if we're fortunate enough to have K-State have another bowl game, all those factors come together and our normal parking lot just overflow. With additional employments that we have and that trend increasing, we wanted to see if we could fill this Southwest lot sooner than later. And a big shout out and thank you to the Department of Public Works who really spearheaded this and brought their crew out and really helped quite a bit. We got that lot filled and this was taken right before the rains yesterday. But we're just about ready to open that lot to the public and we'll have it ready in time for the holiday season and peak period. Continuing with parking. Our design is about 60% complete or a little over. We had a car park study conducted. We said it was going to be done in April and it was. The pro forma was drafted based on a lot of those numbers. It was presented to the Airport Advisory Board. In a few minutes, they're going to come up and walk you through that pro forma and some of the results. And right now, we're reviewing the phasing plan and we've been planning to be ready to bid in November. But I want to take a couple of minutes to talk a little bit about a funding alternative option maybe. So in the past, what we've talked about is, should we charge to park? Are we going to go from free parking to paid parking? And the Airport Advisory Board should know. I'd be remiss if I didn't because they made a strong point to make sure I did remind everyone today that they continue to support moving to a user fee system and charging a park. And as I mentioned, Walker's, Andrew's going to come up and talk through the pro forma here in a minute. But something else happened. President Trump pushed forward an initiative to have a lot more funding in infrastructure. Congress responded and passed the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2018. That injected a lot of money into airports. The FAA, when they received that money, decided to run that through their normal program of the Airport Improvement Program. But it's out of cycle, which created all kinds of new rules and timelines, especially with what was published in the Federal Register Notice. And so they've been adjusting to that and we've just been kind of sitting back observing and watching. So once supplemental funding came through for the FAA, we started to look at it from staff flow and said, well, a parking lot project is actually eligible for those funds. Should we apply for it? And so when we're looking at AIP funding and we're applying for these things, two things, criteria need to be met. Is it eligible and is it justified? That's the FAA terminology in their AIP handbook. One, yes, parking is eligible. Justification is a little bit more difficult. They'd go through a priority ranking system for airport projects. And the FAA wants to see you to take care of all the aeronautical side stuff first. Runway, taxiway, aprons, and then kind of work your way out. So by the time an airport is completed with all those projects on the aeronautical side and get to a ground transportation project or a vertical infrastructure, you usually have to go back and redo an aeronautical and start all over. So it's rare when airports get an opportunity to fund a project like this. Because it's supplemental, it's additional funding that the FAA is getting, there's a possibility we could be competitive. We just don't know how competitive we would be for the selection process. And we don't know for sure the timeline of their selection process. What we do know is by October 31st, we have to submit an interest form saying, FAA, we are interested in these funds for this project. And then we go on describing the project and giving them justification. From there, they're going to put together a national review committee. They're going to evaluate all the different projects that they're getting and then they're going to notify the airports, we would like you to submit a grant application. At that point, you're more likely to receive the funding. But that's the timeline point that we don't know where that's going to fall. So by October 31st, we can submit this. We're planning to go out to bid in November. We're hopeful that the FAA will have a response back to us in time so it doesn't delay our And I don't know, Ron, if we wanted to ask that as a question for guidance or open that to a little bit more discussion?
So obviously, that would be something that I think we would all agree if we can get the feds to give us a grant to build the parking lot and keep it free would be a pretty positive thing and worth waiting for. So I think at the same time, we'd like to know some of our cost factors. So I think as we learn more, that November timeline might get pushed a little bit. But in general, if you want to give us some comments about our pursuit of that, that would be helpful.
In your past experience through these grants, do they typically fund the entire project or they only fund a portion of the project?
Well, the project is eligible for funding at a 90-10 percentage rate.
So that's an important piece right there.
Right. The other part of your question is, how much of the project is eligible for funding? And so something like, like a terminal construction, if you have a revenue generating component of that, it's not eligible for funding, but it's public. So for this, as Ron mentioned, we would keep it free parking because if it becomes revenue generating, it becomes ineligible. So the FAA will pay for it as long as it's open and free to the public. So one of the things we would do is we would look at an alternative bid without any revenue control systems in place. And then that would be for the useful life of the project, which is for pavement 20 years.
So even if we got approved, we'd still have to come up with 10% of the project cost?
We'd have to come up with our 10% match, correct?
And of course, the issue with that is then it's still not free because the taxpayer's still paying for part of it. So, you know, when I was looking at that, you know, my question is, is it possible to bid or put in a grant for part of it? Like right in front of the terminal, you know, you could have an area there with 30-minute parking, which would be free for people to drop off and your handicap and where the buses come in. Is it possible to just do a bid on just a chunk of it, like where the rental car guys park? And then that, and then that way, it would make sense. But, you know, I'm not so sure I like the idea of them forcing it to be, you know, free for 20 years because we're still paying 10%. And then we're going to cover all the maintenance on it and we're not going to be able to recoup that through fees. So I don't know if it's worth, you know, studying an alternative like that, just a piece of it maybe, that would make sense?
I should probably point out too that it's out of cycle. And so because we've already incurred costs and done work with design, design portion is ineligible. Future costs of the project would be eligible if we're not going to incur, which is Construction Administration Services and the construction itself. And so one of the things we could do is seek authority to issue RFQ for Construction Administration Services and then wait to hear the FAA's timeline before we go out to bid. That's just to keep it eligible.
I think it's worth pursuing. I'm not attached to a November date because that's what, you know, there might have been talk about bidding in November. But one of the things, I mean, if that money's on the table, somebody's going to get it. So we should at least try to get some of that money. It is taxpayer money still. And see what that process looks like. It doesn't seem to be too many details, although you said that parking projects might be low. I think it's worth trying, even if it's 50%, 90%, whatever that might look like. One of the assets for our parking lot has always been the free parking. So anyway, we can keep it to that. I would be interested in looking at also because we're not sure what the revenue is going to look like, even if we have it where they're paying. We already, that discussion's yet to come about, we're thinking everybody's going to come, it's still going to be filled to capacity and people are still going to be at 91% at one or a few, a few days during the year and they're actually going to pay for that. So that discussion is still happening. But I think this is worth at least looking at and seeing what, seeing what we're eligible for. I mean, I'm not in a massive rush to get this done one way or another. I think we need to look at all the options we have provided to us.
I'm just curious. I did listen to the Airport Advisory Board meeting yesterday. And you had mentioned that there were a few other peripheral things that you could also apply for a grant for besides just the parking lot. And I don't remember, I just don't remember what those were, that if those items were.
I don't recall what statement I made.
I think it may have been ineligible maybe to your parking. Rental car parking. It may have been ineligible. I think you mentioned that.
Well, I, I think Usha has a good point. I'd like to, for us to try. I mean, what better thing can we do for our citizens than, than find a way to offer them parking at our airport when, in an era when that doesn't happen all the time and they're usually required to pay? So I know that the Advisory Board has supports the paid park fee. I don't know how that balances with the idea of applying for this grant though. I mean, are they intent on the pay to park no matter what? Or if you're not, if you, only if you're not successful getting the grant? If you are successful, are they still supporting the paid park user fee?
Their recommendation to move to a user fee system was made prior to the opportunity of a grant.
Uh huh.
And so it is before this was even as an option.
Yeah.
And this may not be an option if it's not selected. It may not be an option too, depending on what the FAA timeline is. So I'll continue to monitor the situation. If the FAA comes out with guidance saying, you know, we're not going to make decisions for another 12, 15, 18 months, then that kind of drives our decision-making process. If they feel like it's going to be a quick turnaround, then we could say, well, this is kind of happening in line with what our normal project schedule is and we can come back at that point and have more discussion on it, if that's...
The, I think what I'd like to see is that timeline. I mean, we kind of know what we know right now, but if we can, if it changes, we need to see that too.
Right.
I mean, if those things, two things are far apart, then you've got a slightly different decision to make.
Yeah.
So the other one I'd like to see maybe along the, I agree, I think with, with Usha and also with Wynn, that I'd like to go down that road of taking a look at what we might be able to do with a grant. And the other one is, maybe I'm slightly different than Wynn on this one, but close-in parking, if you could make that paid parking and then your, let's call it remote lots, which would be Southwest and Southeast perhaps. Those are the bigger lots that we could maybe get under that grant. If we can kind of look at those two paths with one being, and then separate the other one into two parts.
So let me go back. I have a drawing right here. And I'm just going to kind of theorize out loud here with you. If we applied to the FAA for a parking project and show them the entire lot, our intentions of striping out this lot, the capacity, the parking forecast that we had as part of the Terminal Master Planning Effort, the increased employments as justification, they will look at this whole project. If we start piecemealing now and saying, well, this portion here though, we're going to have revenue generating, so we're only applying for a segment of our parking lot. I don't know what that does to the competitiveness of the application. I really don't know. And so that's something that we can't put together. The challenge is when we submit that interest form, I have to submit one version. And so it's picking which one is going to be the most competitive with the FAA. And so I'll give them a holler. You know, we've got some good relationships over there and I can fill them out and see if they have any leanings on, on which way they would like to see it come through.
All right.
Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the lovely gentleman to my left.
Good evening. Again, I'm Andrew Vidor with Walker Consultants. It's good to be back in Manhattan and talking with you folks again this evening. As Jesse has indicated, we met with the Airport Advisory Board earlier this year to present preliminary revenue numbers for the airport if it was to move to paid parking. We want to talk about a couple of things. I think there's going to be some time for some great discussion about this and I'm sure there's going to be some questions. So let's try to answer some of those questions through what we're going to talk about. And then we'll have, I think, open discussion. If you do have burning questions, please, though, do stop me. We've seen this airport layout before and the total capacity going to nearly 800 parking spaces. That's up from almost 600 parking spaces today. So there's going to be definitely a parking capacity increase. We want to look at and talk about tonight the projected potential revenue as a result of implementing paid parking and talk about some very important impacts and outcomes as a result of implementing paid parking. And that is if there are reductions in parking demand and user habits and what those changes might or might not occur to be as a result of that. And then talk a bit about the financial side of, you know, what different parking rates affect any bond payments that are issued as a result of these airport improvements. And then talk a bit about what lightly parking rate scenario might be for discussion with you folks tonight. Again, the 2017 employments were just over 66,000. Jesse talked a lot about already the increase of employments. We'll get back to that in a bit. But in April, we did 10 days of data collection at the airport to try to understand the length that parkers park at the airport. And that's an important factor in this model as we start to put together revenue forecasts because we need to have some anecdotal data on length of stay. It's interesting that the average length of stay is just under three days. So meaning that most people's trips, whether it's for business or leisure, are three-day trips, but not staying the full third day. The average turnover on a daily basis in the lot is, it turns over 1.35x. Key metrics in the model, but I think it's interesting to see the distribution of how long people stay. 39% of all parkers in that 10-day period only stayed between 24 and up to, but not including, 48 hours. So there's a lot of short trips, at least during that 10-day period when we did our data collection. We looked at a number of airports and pure parking, pure parking airports, so that's Columbia, Missouri and Lincoln, Nebraska. We also looked at competing airports in this direct market, which include Kansas City, Salina and Wichita. And this benchmarking is done to try to understand what those other airports are charging in terms of parking fees. The average parking fee is $7 amongst these peer and competition airports. And that $7 is that far right column, which is the economy daily. And the airport here tends to match more the economy daily. Those are surface parking lots. Some of these other competing airports like Kansas City and Wichita have parking garages, so they're going to have higher daily and higher hourly rates. These rates that we're showing compared to employments also do not look at what the market potential is in terms of rate and/or whether or not they could be charging higher rates. This is purely a comparison against parking rates and the competing airports. The other airports that you see at the bottom in that table are airports that have populations of around 200,000 people and are also university towns that have student enrollment of around 25,000 people. So those airports are similar in population size to Manhattan and similar to university size. So they're pretty comparable in terms of what we might see to Manhattan.
Just one second. Can you go back to your previous slide for just a moment?
Sure.
So when you say 39% one day, is that people that have just stayed for a half hour to drop somebody off and then came back and left? Or is it overnight? Is there any way to know that?
Sure, yeah. So let's talk more about the, the methods we use to collect that data. The picture on the bottom left here is a picture of two cameras mounted on top of the roof of a passenger vehicle. Those are license plate recognition cameras and they have software and a computer tied to them. And so Olson and Associates drove the lot on a daily basis over that 10-day period in between the time the first flight departed and the time the first flight arrived. So consistently each day, those license plates were recorded. Now that captured almost every single license plate in the parking lots. That excludes the parking lot that is used for rental car and excludes the airport administration parking lot. The data that had captured parking plates in the similar example that you mentioned of maybe they brought their car in and dropped somebody off and were here for half an hour, an hour, those plate hits were scrubbed and removed from the analysis. So this only looks at parking durations of 24 hours or more, so an overnight trip. So this one day, 39% of all the cars that we looked at, looks at someone that would have possibly departed on a morning flight on a Monday and came back on Tuesday at some point in the day, but was not there Wednesday morning. You're welcome. One of the really important factors in this revenue model looks at the parking demand and the elasticity of implementing paid parking. So going from free parking to paid parking, there will be behavior changes. And those behavior changes depend on a lot of different factors. Some of those factors include the type of traveler flying out of Manhattan Regional Airport. And so those types of travelers are categorized as business travelers or leisure travelers. And in 2011, there was an intercept survey done at passengers at the airport to try to establish the split between those travel user groups. And so that's an important factor. Sixty percent of your travelers flying and originating out of Manhattan are on business. So that includes professional business, that includes military flights because that is a type of business. Leisure travel are pleasure trips where you're going for your own personal enjoyment. So that's a really important variable in the model. The other variables of elasticity include what are the other types of transit or transportation that could be used to get yourself to the airport as a passenger? That includes transportation network companies like Uber and Lyft. Now, I'm showing that one-way trip using a transportation network company from downtown Manhattan out to the airport is around $20. That price is going to be variable based on time of day and demand for other users on the system, but that's a reasonable price point. So a round trip fare from downtown, maybe not your house if you live on the north side, but from downtown would be about $20. So $40 round trip is an alternative way that you can get to the airport. You could also be dropped off by a family member, a friend, a taxi, or some other type of transportation company. Or your other choices are to not use Manhattan Regional Airport and to drive to Salina, to drive to Wichita, to drive to Kansas City. It's an alternative choice to get somewhere on a plane. We looked at five different demand elasticity models. And a lot of these demand elasticity models are based off of industry research. The Victoria Policy Institute is one of the most recognized industry organizations that has done studies on the demand elasticity for parking specifically. And while they don't have specific demand elasticities for airports and going from free parking to paid parking, they have similar studies that we could use to look at. We always, also looked at demand elasticity of IATA, which is the International Air Transportation Association. And IATA is published information based on studies as to behavior changes of passengers buying airplane tickets as a result of fare changes. So you look on the website and you see that a flight from Chic-, from Manhattan to Chicago is X amount of dollars, but if you go through DFW and then onto Chicago, it might be a different price. And that's based on a lot of different factors. Their demand of elasticity as a result of 1% increase in ticket price is .63%. So every time that price of an airplane ticket changes by 1%, the consumer purchase is down .63%. Pretty small ratio, okay? So let's put that into relative terms. If there's a $350 airfare out of Manhattan round trip and we add at a $5 a day parking rate for five days, that increase in total cost of that transaction is 25 additional dollars, okay? So that takes it from $350 to $375. Pretty small marginal fee. The resulting impact on demand is less than 1%. So out of, you know, let's call it 1% for ease of math, out of the 70,000 employments that you might see, that could be a very small number in total reduction of trips. So, we're trying to put this in comparison, trying to make it relative so we understand what that real impact is. The impact elasticity of business travelers is less. We've established a 5% reduction in parking. And for leisure travelers, that's a 20% reduction in parking. Now, that does not mean that 5% of employments will decrease. That is a combination of changes in modes. So if paid parking were to be implemented at a rate of, say, $5, 5% of business travelers flying out of Manhattan will do a combination of a couple of things. They could switch to a transportation network company. They could begin to be dropped off. Or they could choose a different airport. Same thing with leisure travelers. Leisure travelers have a higher demand of elasticity, so their change in behavior is more expanded and more sustained than that of business travelers. So 20% of those leisure travelers would either not drive, be dropped off, or potentially change airports. Not to be confused with, and I want to stress this, 20% of business travelers will now go to Wichita or Kansas City. That's not what we're saying. So those are important factors. I think it's also important to recognize that these models that we've built are conservative, meaning that we have looked at the average monthly employments over the last five years. We are not considering the fact in this model that we're seeing continued growth and a pretty reasonable spike in the last year. The five-year growth trend and the regression line for that is pretty nominal. So it doesn't show a lot of growth, meaning it's conservative in the fact that we're not overestimating or overprojecting future changes in behaviors. We also are recognizing that there is a potential 2% loss in employments. So that's people changing airport behaviors and where they're flying out of as a result of the new service out of Salina. And we are not projecting growth at the airport. And that's also important because it's a conservative approach. We're not trying to capture every potential dollar in this revenue model. We're trying to conservatively say you could receive X amount of dollars, the likelihood of receiving more than X is higher than that. So we don't want to overproject money. This graph shows a couple of different things and I'll walk you through it here. The blue bars are daily parking rates, from 50 cents a day to $10 a day. The three horizontal lines represent the debt service payment on an annual basis, depending on the number of years that that bond is taken out for. The gray line on top being 10 years with a yearly debt service payment of just under $600,000. A 15-year longer-term bond payment for the same amount of money at about $400,000 on a yearly basis. And the 20-year bond payment of about $350,000 on an annual basis. So when you see a blue bar above a line, it means that that parking rate can pay on an annual basis the yearly debt service. And that's important because as we start talking about what could that potential parking rate be, you'll want to look at, well, what debt service timeframe do we want to support? And can we use parking rates as a, parking fees and parking revenues as a standalone revenue source to pay for the debt service of the parking lot improvements? And then after that debt service is paid off, what is the annual revenue to have and do a sinking fund or an O and M or a general operation fund to pay for future projects of the airport, parking related or not? And to also help fund the regular and ongoing parking maintenance and operations costs at the airport? So let's look at the $5 bar. The $5 bar is showing us that we can pay for the 10-year debt service at around $600,000 a year with a daily rate of $5 and have additional revenue in excess of the annual bond payment. If we want to look at a lower parking rate, like $3 for example, the 20-year bond payment of around $350,000 could be paid with a $3 daily rate. It wouldn't quite be able to pay the 15-year rate, which is shown as the yellow line. You see that blue line, the blue bar is below that. So it shows what the, the debt service might be against variable parking rates.
The, I was trying to do a couple of things there with, with the math and I appreciate the, the analysis that you've done. But help me out here. We have, what do we have, 583 parking spots, something like that now? So if you take the month of July, which had around 6,500 employments, and you say each one of them is going to stay two and a half days, the number of daily employments is 170 average, let's say, times two and a half or two, 2.8. And then you say, well, the parking lot on average is .78 or it's just rounded off to .8. So at some point, if the trend follows employments, when you get up somewhere between 7,000 and let's say 7,400, that you will reach capacity at 80% of occupancy. See where I'm going? So even at 80% occupancy, you will be above 580 parking space requirement. So in this, how many parking spaces, I know you did it on employments, but how many parking spaces does this assume?
So this is a function of cars parked, a total accumulation of car days parked per month. So that's about 13,000 car days parked per month. Our analysis is based off of employments and we have developed a ratio.
Because while you're doing that, you know, Jesse, we talked about various parking lot size requirements. What I'm trying to match here is if, if we choose a number above 583 or whatever it is, then that, the revenue from that should increase unless the occupancy ratio goes down.
Right. So we're looking at per employment, on an employment basis, Commissioner Dodson. There's about, and it depends month over month, but there's somewhere around two and a half car parked days per employment. So what will happen is, is again, this model projects no growth.
Right.
And it looks at the average employment history on a monthly basis, which varies.
Right.
Okay? Month to month, over that five-year historical period. So this doesn't consider the fact that, you know, Jesse's forecast shows growth, which is positive, which would include more cars parked, which would mean that the existing parking lot capacity would have to be increased. This also does look at and consider the fact that there will be reductions in cars parked. We haven't looked at what that convergence is between the two. But it results in, you know, blended between the business travelers and leisure travelers about, between 1,000 and 1,500 car days per month, conservatively, which is probably overestimated as a result of limited alternative choices. So you may say, well, now that we're implementing paid parking, I'm going to drive to Kansas City or I'm going to drive to Wichita. So if you do that and you choose to make that your compelling argument as a consumer, as an airline passenger, what you're doing is driving 130 miles, paying for a tank of gas. And by the time you get there, you still have to pay to park in Kansas City and you still have to pay to park in Wichita. So you're actually adding greater incremental cost to your total ticket value than the cost savings of taking a lower-cost airfare. Now that's not a single-person basis. If you're flying a family of five, like mine, you know, that incremental cost basis as a reduction of the airfare cost would possibly, there's a tipping point, right? But as a business traveler, that demand of elasticity is relatively low. So this model is, you know, pretty conservative. And we're not trying to show every dollar that could be captured. We're realistic about the fact that the demand of elasticity is relatively low, not insignificant, but relatively low. And that the five-year employment trends are showing, you know, signs of growth and, you know, Jesse talking and sharing with you about the fact that American Airlines is adding that third daily flight back in November to Chicago is telling and important. We're not looking at decreases in trends. We believe there's a, a market for paid parking in, in Manhattan. You know, that likely reduction in parking demand, like I said, is, is probably relatively low compared to the balance of the revenue that could be generated from it. And it's an important part to recognize that if paid parking were to be implemented, it can support paying the bonds that would have to be taken out for the airport improvements. Unlike if the FAA grant were to be achieved, you know, this provides a long-term revenue stream and not a short-term, you know, cash grab to have that project work out. We're also recommending that if paid parking were to be implemented, that you provide a grace period as a customer benefit to flying out of Manhattan Regional Airport. So when you're going to pick up a friend, a loved one, a spouse, colleague from the airport that you're not inconvenienced by having to pay a parking fee to, to be there for 30 minutes or an hour if the flight is not on schedule or to give that extra time to get the family out of the car and, you know, hold the sign to say, "Welcome home." You know, "We're glad you're back in our city and you returned home safely from, from your deployments." So that is a recommendation that if you move to paid parking, we make sure that, recommend that you consider providing that grace period so parkers don't feel like they don't have an ability to, to come in and, and come out quickly. And you're really looking to capture those overnight trips.
What does that look like? Does that mean a half hour, you'd have a half hour before your parking fee engaged or?
Sure. So there's a lot of different ways.
Because there are these, there are variables of.
Yeah, there's a lot of different ways to do it, Mayor Morrissey. One of the easiest ways to do that is, is the parker would still enter the parking lot and be stopped by the parking gate. They would extract the ticket from the machine and park as they would if they were staying overnight.
Yep.
Upon leaving the parking lot, they would insert that ticket into the exit machine and it would calculate that the vehicle had not been there for X amount of time. And that if, as long as you're under that window, then the gate would raise and away you go. Because we're interested in capturing overnight parkers and parking fees on overnight parkers, you could set that threshold anywhere from 15 minutes to seven or eight hours. And that seven or eight hours could be reached because you could take theoretically that 6:00 AM flight out to Chicago and be back and arrive at that 10:30 flight. That's not an uncommon situation for business travelers to take those. That's not an uncommon situation for business travelers to take those day trips. So that threshold could be set so you could be there for three hours in advance of that flight and be waiting and being able to not have to worry about incurring a parking fee.
The national cities that you were referring to, was there ever any information on how many travelers are actually cognizant, especially when they're purchasing the ticket of parking prices? Maybe I'm just a poorly-prepared traveler, but I almost never think about how much parking is going to cost until I essentially probably the morning of before I go to the airport.
Sure.
I also don't take long trips, to be fair, either. If I was staying somewhere for 10 days, that might be a different story. But how many people are actually aware or factor in parking costs into their decision-making?
Well, I can say this. We don't have data to support the answer to your question. And I think it varies wildly based on the savviness of the consumer. Not everybody knows that you have to pay $25 to check a bag, and they may very well be surprised when they arrive at the ticket counter and incur an extra $25 per bag one-way fee. So I think it largely boils down to the savviness of the consumer and the frequency that they travel. And then also, it depends on their own personal financial situation and whether or not those additional costs are important to them in that decision. So your, you know, analogy of 10 days very well may make you rethink whether you're willing to pay $50 at $5 a day, for example, for that 10 days. Is that convenience worth it? Or do you have an alternative choice, which could be taking that $20 Uber ride or phoning your friend or having, you know, your mom or dad or spouse or significant other drop you off? Those are all individual variables and factors that are difficult to model.
So maybe this is more of a question for Jesse. Do we, is there a way that we can look at? I mean, essentially, it sounds like your answer is probably the more frequently you travel, the more you think about little things like that. So is there a way to know, out of Manhattan, are we getting people who more often than not are traveling frequently? Or is it more people who are flying only once or twice a year?
I don't know.
Because that could vary, if, I mean, if his statement is true, that could change the elasticity model completely, right?
Well, so we don't have data to show how many first-time travelers there are. Some of the anecdotal information that we get are from our frequent travelers. And I've heard these stories quite a bit in the last couple of months, that they're frequent travelers and they're, they used to be able to recognize everybody on the plane with them. And the more that they've flown over the last few months, they realize that they know less and less people on the aircraft. So we're seeing more people, newer people fly. And then with increased employments, I think we infer that too, that there's more new people flying. But with 60% of the market being travel-related or a business-related travel, I think there's a fair amount of percentage to though that is frequent.
That's what, yeah. That, I guess that's what I was going towards. You know, if we, if our airport tends to have more business travelers and probably are more likely frequent flyers, then the elasticity model that's based off kind of a national average may be a little off for us because you might have more savvy flyers.
Well, and that shows in the model, you know, the business travel reduction in parking demand is only 5%. So it's a pretty marginal number of the fact that 60% of the employments are, are business. Their cost sensitivity is very different than the cost sensitivity of a leisure trip.
That's true.
You know, those parking fees are being reimbursed by their company, they're being reimbursed by their client. So that parker does not have to personally incur those fees. So their willingness to pay that is pretty high, is what that means. But that $5 a day rate isn't going to influence their decision to fly in and out of Manhattan. They're less likely to say, well, because I'm paying $5 a day, I'm driving to Kansas City? Not likely. Because they're doing this on a regular basis and it's for business, so it's being paid for.
Got it. Thank you.
I can just give you a little personal experience. I mean, the business traveler is quite cognizant of which airport he's going out of and how much he's going to pay, because when you submit the business, the expense report, all that's on there. And in my own case, we had people looking at which airport you use, for example, do you use Washington National, do you use Dulles, or do you use Baltimore? What is the price of the ticket out of each one? Does it get to, to your destination in an appropriate time? What is the fee for parking? Because you generally take your own car down there. At the other end, when you get off, then you, if, if you go in the same places over and over again, you begin to understand the hotel cost on the other end and how best to get to that hotel. Do they furnish a, a limousine service to come get you? I mean, all those costs, after a while, you begin to understand. And what you try to do in business is drive those down. So I, I think that most travelers, particularly on the business side, are pretty well aware of the costs they're paying and they try to minimize it.
So I have a few, were you done with the presentation? I don't want to interrupt.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So some of my concerns, just looking at this one. I know, I'm not sure people can see the chart that you have up there as opposed to the graph, but Salina and I believe Columbia, Missouri, don't have any parking fee structure. They're zero. And I think those are closer to our neighborhood of Manhattan as opposed to the other ones because Columbia is at 88,000 deployments, Manhattan is at 66,000 something, and Salina is at 13, but they're our neighbor. So they don't charge anything, and I do know they have parking. I'm not sure about Columbia, but I do know Salina does have a parking lot. So I just want to put that in perspective as we're just having this discussion. Kansas City, Wichita, and Lincoln, Nebraska have much, much larger airports than we do. So when we travel to Kansas City, we're coming from, out of Kansas City. I'm not sure how many people were coming, that are coming to the Manhattan Regional Airport are out of Manhattan. Because if I'm going to go from Manhattan to the airport, I'll have somebody drop me off. But are they coming from Wamigo? Are they coming from, are they in the Potawatomi? I don't know those numbers. It depends. I think when a person chooses to stay overnight, if they have to pay, it's dependent from how far they're coming from as opposed to if you're in the city, you're going to get dropped off. So what does our numbers look like? I know Mayor Morris has asked this question before. How many people are we getting out of, outside of Manhattan aware if they need to? They're the ones who are going to stay overnight. People in Manhattan are not going to stay overnight.
Commissioner Ready to respond to your question. I'm going to go into files here because the last time we presented, we had a.
But right now, it's free. I'm saying.
You drive in the night before, but you didn't park at the airport, you parked at the hotel.
But more people have a chance, if they're coming from outside of Manhattan, to travel outside to another state. Though more willing to leave their car overnight if they have to pay as opposed to if you're living in Manhattan.
As I mentioned, the last time we, we met and presented, it was March 20th, we had these slides up, and this was from our air service report done by Meaden Hunt. And it showed our catchment area and our retainage of the catchment area, and it is about a 200,000 populous, population area here. And 25% of that market area stays with us. The remainder goes mostly to Kansas City. And as far as breakdown goes, that was also shown. And that was, Manhattan accounts for percentage use, 30%. Junction at 29. It's all here in the center column. So the majority is from the Manhattan Junction area, and then after that, we start dropping off into Abilene and Wamigo and Clay Center has 22%. We get a lot from Clay Center, St. George area as well, and Westmoreland. So percentage use and the true passenger, the actual people traveling here is broken down.
Thanks, Jesse. That's helpful. And the reason I ask is, like I said, when we look at the costs, if, if someone in Manhattan's going to leave out of town for a few days, chances are they're going to get dropped off if they have to pay. And when we come back to, do people know they have to pay for parking? Our marketing strategy has been free parking. So people in Manhattan know it's free parking. That's been one of the marketing tools we've used. So right now, they know what parking is at Manhattan Airport. It's zero as far as the fee is concerned. So once we tag that on, I wonder how many people are going to stop and leave their cars overnight, especially if they're traveling out of others from Kent, K-State, Fort Riley, Junction City, or Manhattan. So that's one of the revenue things I'd like to think about as we move forward. You said the business, from the projections, 5% of business users and 30 business, 30% from leisure users. So that's 30% you're already anticipating as loss that we will not be picking up any kind of fees from. The more I looked into it, you talked about Uber and Lyft, and you said something about $40 if they're coming from downtown, and round trip would be about $40. There's more and more airports that are losing revenue on their parking lots. And I don't know what our Uber ratio is here as far as the usage, but more and more parking lots at airports, more people are not leaving their cars there, they're using Uber. The garages are not being as full as they used to be, even for the largest airports, because people are using Uber or Lyft or other, I forgot the term they use, transportation network companies, I guess, that they use. So I don't know what that looks like here. Right now, it's full, even 91% or 96% on certain days because it's free. So once it's not free, I think we might see the parking not being used as much. So my concern is, when we talk about taxpayers and bond issues and paying down a debt on a parking lot, and we're looking at parking fees as a revenue source, even if it's $5 or $7, I almost think it's going to be a 50% decline of what we're anticipating. And I don't know what that's going to bring in as far as revenue. So our taxpayers are going to pick up the tab one way or another. They're even talking about driverless cars. I don't know what that would look like in Manhattan, but when I looked at other airports, that's one of the things they're considering. So if they're already reporting a loss of revenue, I don't know what it's going to look like in Manhattan, and this has always been a concern to me. So how are you going to sell the Manhattan Airport if you take out free parking? What is, what is the catch for them to? Because it's already a little bit more expensive to fly out of Manhattan as opposed to Kansas City. I don't know what the, what the hook will be. So I just have a few, I guess I'm frustrated in a way because it's not, the parking lot itself is not a huge priority when we have so many things going on within the city and our debt is accumulating. I don't want to have another priority that's on our table right now where we know the projections are going to be low. At least I am anticipating that it's going to be lower than what's being projected here. So I would like to have more discussions on this and see. I'm not for a $5 or $7 fee structure. I'm still for free. But I'm also not for the parking lot itself because I don't know what that looks like. Because I think one of the reasons people use our airport to the maximum that they're using right now is because there's no fees attached to it.
So if I could just comment on a couple of items that you brought up. One in particular, the TNCs, and you mentioned Uber and Lifts and, and the impact that it has on revenue in other airports. And that was a concern as Uber started to come through and become more popular in the commercial service airports. What we saw was airports responded by creating agreements with those companies and managing through their TNC program. Right now in Manhattan, we have no TNC program for the airport, so shuttles, buses, taxi cabs, Uber, Lyft, any of the TNCs can come and go as they please. While their parking capacity may have dipped, their revenues have not because they compensate by charging fees for those types of companies. That is an alternative we can look at as well of creating agreements with each of those and to have revenue come in and compensate as well. I don't know if you want to.
The other thing, Andrew, if you'd go back, I mean, the, the reason you presented one of those charts is that the studies show in these elasticity models exactly what Commissioner Ready is trying to get to. That is, if you raise parking or institute parking fees according to a delta in cost, total cost, you can predict the kinds of decreases you might have. Is that correctly stated?
Yes, that's correct. So in the far-right column, you see the elasticity model numbers. We are projecting, as a result of implementing paid parking, Commissioner Ready, that there will be a 5% reduction in business travelers' parking as a result of implemented paid parking at a rate of around $5. That will change marginally if you go to six or if you go to four, but not significantly. And then we are showing a reality, which is a real reality, of a reduction in leisure travelers parking, not parking at the airport rather, as in the quantity of 20%. Now, you can't add those two together and say it's a 25% overall reduction because they're weighted as a result of the 60-40 split. 60% being 60% of the travelers at Manhattan Regional Airport are business travelers and that 40% is leisure travelers. So you need to take the weighted average of that, but you're right, that is a very true reality that implemented paid parking will decrease demand in vehicles parked at the airport. But the parking revenues that are generated from that, even as a result of having less cars parked, can support the debt service coverage. I think that there's two other comments I'd like to make based off of your observations. And Jesse touched on one, is transportation network company fees. Yes, airports are losing vehicles parking at the airport as a result of transportation network companies. But airports nationally, employments are growing. So while there is a reduction in people parking from TNCs, the overall demand for parking at airports is not decreasing significantly because of employment growth overall. And Jesse's showed you that there is continued projected growth at the airport. So, you know, I think we need to balance that and look at what that might be and consider in the future, how that would impact it. You know, the other comment that you made in consideration to think about is the impact of autonomous vehicles or driverless vehicles. The answer is yes. And in some of the other presentations I've provided to city commission over the last 18 months or so, we've talked about the impact of autonomous vehicles in the future. And the future being not 2019, not 2020, but probably in the next 20 years, yeah, there will be an increase in autonomous vehicles on the road. In the short term, the likelihood of the number of autonomous vehicles that would be driving, driving around in Manhattan and to the airport is likely to be nominal. So the effects would be negligible. But in the future, far out, most certainly, it will have a greater impact.
And I knew there was one other comment I wanted to make on this, and I wanted to stress that as we're looking at this project, it is a parking improvement project with the emphasis on improvement. We are not building a new lot for additional people as much as we are improving what we have. So a large portion, and I'll just talk from the drawing we have here, a large portion of our lot is currently paved with asphalt. And we discussed in the past that this was done with about a two-inch, maybe two and a quarter inch, with anticipation that there was going to be a follow-up two-inch overlay on it. That never came. And so now we're at a, I think about a 35% complete failure rate on the asphalt. And so we're seeing a lot of erosion in specific areas where water's just getting a hold. As we've expanded a little bit of parking, we've also had challenges in lighting. There are lighting poles along this line here that we've added floodlights to the lighting pole, just as an appearance, just to try and get adequate lighting. We've also turned ramp lighting from the military ramp area towards the parking lot to help illuminate part of the parking lot because we don't have proper lighting. And so a lot of those things, drainage control, runoff that we have issues with, are part of the parking improvement and what drives the need of the project. So yes, we have more employments, more people parking, but we also have a need of improving the infrastructure that is in place, lighting, runoff, trip and fall hazards, and, and items of that nature.
I wanted to, you know, clarify, we're looking at this model and, you know, people are looking at 5% decrease in business. It's parkers, it's not people flying. And, and those are two separate things. So if less people park, that doesn't mean necessarily that, that same amount of people will not be flying. I think that's very important because based on your numbers, I figured at worst, we'd lose like 70 passengers, if my math is right.
Yeah. Commissioner Butler. Yeah, Commissioner Butler's.
That's negligible to me because if you compare that to your growth model, what difference does it make? And, and the other thing that disturbs me is everybody keeps referring to this as free parking. It's not. The citizens of Manhattan are paying for it. The business owners in Manhattan are paying for it in their taxes. If you live in Junction City, it's free. You know, it's called a regional airport, but all the financing is municipal. And so I'm a hundred percent for following what the, you know, board recommends, which is we need charge for parking at some level, you know, five to seven dollars. And I think we should have a, you know, short-range bond so that we can, we can pay it off and also sort of give a bit more profitability there. And then i- if growth in, in passengers goes up and the number of people that leave their cars there goes down, that's good because then we don't need to build more parking places. I think those two actually go hand in hand. You know, if you can change behavior because somebody's going to use an Uber or they don't want to leave their car over there overnight because they, they live at Fort Riley or Junction City where one of your friends could drop you off, I think that works in our advantage. So I'm a hundred percent for also phasing this so that we don't just go out and, you know, build it all because if the, if the amount of space we need drops, then fine, let's do the construction in phases. And I think starting at a five dollar level is fine, I can see us going as high as seven.
So a couple of things, just my thoughts on this. First, I'm not fully, while I think free parking is a good marketing tool for us at the moment, I, I'm not fully convinced that that's why people choose to fly out of Manhattan. I fly a few times a year, a couple of times for business and maybe once or twice to go do something fun. And eighty percent of the time, ninety percent of the time when I choose to fly out of Manhattan, it's because I don't want to drive two hours home after my trip from Kansas City. And after you rent a car and/or my business pays for mileage, it's almost just as expensive for me to fly out of Kansas City as it is Manhattan. The only benefits might be there's a more direct flight. With that being said, I'm not fully convinced free parking is what is pulling people in. On the, on the Uber kind of Lyft side of it, and this is totally an assumption on my part and not based on any scientific evidence whatsoever, but being the resident Uber driver on the City Commission, I do it part-time for fun. I can tell you, I've taken a lot more people from the airport into Manhattan than I have from Manhattan to the airport. Obviously, people that are from out of town, flying into Manhattan and then need a ride into town. So when we're figuring kind of those Uber costs, also realize that if you're someone who is paying for Uber to get out there, twenty dollars in Uber to get back, you're probably paying for Uber again in the city too. So total, you're probably transportation network wise, paying sixty to eighty dollars when you add all that up together, which is a significant amount of money. So again, I, I'm not fully convinced that you'll see a large drop-off because of things like Uber or Lyft. Now, there's been some evidence that says that it's going down a little bit, but as you noted, employments make it up. On the other hand, I'm not fully, and it kind of in Commissioner Ready's note, this isn't huge on my priority list, but I also will concede that it's something that as the airport continues to grow, which is obviously doing, this is something that we're going to have to address at some point. So the only thing that I would say is, again, I took an unscientific poll today at work for my coworkers who fly a lot more than I do, and I asked them, would you rather pay a user fee or parking fee at the airport, or would you rather this project fall on sales tax or property tax? And all of them said they would rather pay a parking fee than pay for it through another means of tax. So if we do move forward with this parking, if the commission deems that this is, this is a priority, which thus far it seems as though, even before I came on the commission, it was deemed a priority, then all I really want as we continue to explore further is to make sure that we pick a revenue source that's going to pay off the bonds. And also, not only make, be able to make the annual bond payment, but pay for maintenance too. If we're going to add that much pavement, I want to make sure again that a bunch of added, added expenses aren't lopped onto the general fund, which again, I know that's what you're trying to do, but I want to make it very clear that that's a priority for me if we move forward with something like this. The other thing that I would like us to do is to have a little bit of a contingency plan. I don't think that we can write that into whatever we pass, but something that I've noticed on the commission is we do a lot of arguing over what funds payment should come out of, when that probably should have been established the day that we issued those bonds. Said what payment is it going, what fund is the payment coming out of? And if for whatever reason that fund can't make that payment, where's it coming from next? Because I don't want any surprises if one year we're two hundred thousand dollars short on revenue, we have to make that bond payment and then we're arguing about whether it should come out of the Economic Development Fund, the General Fund, or some other place. So I want the contingency plans to be really clear. So not a huge priority for me personally, but I see the need going forward. I just want to be sure that if we do it, we can do this with parking fees, try to be as, obviously as non-invasive as possible, but I think this is a trend that we're going to have to go towards no matter what. Otherwise, it's going to fall on our general fund, and that's not sustainable either. So we have to do something now.
I want to make a comment on priorities. For me, it's a higher priority. We've talked a lot about economic development, airport's a big piece of that. And right now, you know, if you go to that parking lot in the winter, after it snowed, you know, and Jesse's mentioned this, and there's no lighting, there's mud holes, I mean, you, you can't get your baggage in there, it's a disaster. And then that would cause people to maybe not use the airport. And, you know, if we're fixing to invest, we invested a lot of money in the terminal, we're fixing to fix the runway up, and we can't ignore the parking because it's bigger than just a place to park a car. It's the lighting, it's the safety, it's getting, it's getting in and out of there. So, you know, clearly, that, that has to be a priority. If you're going to maintain the airport, it's fix the parking. But I agree with, you know, Commissioner McKay, it's, it's clear that, you know, if we, if we fix the parking, it should be funded by the fees, and that's the dedicated source. And we've got to be smart about doing that so that we don't underestimate it. That's why I'm for maybe a little bit higher fee, you know, maybe going with six dollars and going with, you know, a, a bond where we're, we're showing an anticipated profit which we could reinvest. And in that way, if something doesn't go right because we've miscalculated, then we won't be dipping into some other fund to pay for it. That's as long as we approach it that way, I think we're good to go.
Well, I was just going to ask for some information about the bonding and how long it would take to pay, how many long the bonds would be typically for a project like this. And what I'm wondering is, yeah, that's the first question. Eight years?
So that's probably an engineer's question on, on what the proposal is for the nature of the improvement in the thickness of the, of the, we're overlaying asphalt and I think we're taking alternates for asphalt and concrete on the, what isn't paved and what would be the general life cycle of that, knowing you're going to have some striping and other maintenance to perform over the years?
Can I, let me preface to Mark's comments in response to that by saying that there was an earlier statement made about phasing and the way we phase this out and the way we bid it out. And that's one of the things that Mark has been working on is the phasing plan. And so when we look at bidding out, we would see portions of this bid out separately so we can identify what those costs are for each lot. So if we were going to do piecemeal in the highest priority of what the parking lot is, and so that could also drive how much we actually have in debt service.
With this lot being only about four inches thick, four to five inches thick, we're going to core it here next week and determine what's there and what we can put back. This lot here will not have a twenty-year design life out of it because it's just, it's, we'll, we'll need to be milled and maintained through, within that twenty-year.
Is that the yellow one, the big one?
This one right here, what I'm, that one here, the big one.
Will not have twenty years.
No, you, you'll have to do some maintenance on that within that twenty years unless you go in and rebuild the whole thing. I'm just going to be upfront to just tell you that.
I'm just, I, I'm confused by that because you are talking about replacing the whole thing.
No, we're not.
You're not?
You're not. We're just going to, we're going to fix the holes.
Yeah.
But your overall thickness.
Okay.
That it was designed for, it was not for a twenty-year design life. Now, we're going to check that when we do the cores and see what's there, but that's my anticipation and that was not designed for a twenty-year design life. Typically on asphalt, you're going to need to come in about every seven to ten years and do some milling and do some fixing on an asphalt. It's not going to be non-maintainable for twenty years on an asphalt surface parking lot. You're going to have to do something to it. Yeah.
All right.
Now, these other two lots is going to be designed because we're starting from scratch. It's going to be designed for an asphalt concrete alternate, and it'll be designed for a twenty-year design life of a pavement design. And it will look different as far as thicknesses compared to this other existing lot. It will look different.
Right.
But that's our intention, is creating a twenty-year. Since you're looking at bonding this, or even if you go FAA, we're going to be looking at, we want to do that twenty-year design life of a design.
So when, but when you say twenty years, the bonds don't have to last.
No, 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 that's correct.
That's just the life.
That's the life that we're going to design for.
Yeah.
Right. Which I, I don't want to design for anything less than that.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. So I'm asking about the, how long it would take to pay the bonds out.
So those are the options we showed, and maybe we go back to the bar graph chart there that shows the, the three horizontal lines, one, you know, ten-year bond, fifteen-year bond, twenty-year bond. That's going to be a, really a subject of, of your fee you're going to charge. So the, the lower the fee, the longer you're probably going to have to go out. So, you know, and, and there, the other thing to keep in mind too is, you know, hearing the comments about we're going from free to seven is kind of sticker shock, you know, some people might react to that pretty negatively. So if, for example, you might pick the three-year on a fif, the three dollars on a fifteen-year bond, it doesn't quite make it, but if you passed a fee schedule that says you're going to raise that a quarter every year, you know, you're going to be up to five dollars or six dollars, and that's going to generate more revenue. So you always have that option as well, so you could increase gradually, which is kind of our utility option that we do in water and wastewater. So those are, you've got some options there, and I think, and I would agree, you know, what's the anticipated maintenance cost going to be, that we should have additional funds, you know, what should we establish that contingency within that fee amount to, plus have extra money for maintenance down the road? So those are different aspects that we could, can certainly work through and make some recommendations on.
One of the things, you know, we've done in the past, Bernie, is there's a reason you try to use a ten-year bond, and that is your interest is drastically reduced. I mean, the same thing you do if you have a fifteen or a thirty-year mortgage. So when we get to that point, you know, we'll see what the total cost of the project is, when we'll see what we're going to pay with a ten-year bonding process versus fifteen and twenty, and then we can kind of see what the impact might be. But without knowing the total cost and what the interest rate, or what, yeah, interest rate as well as the total amount of interest we pay, we kind of are only guessing right now.
I do think our employments are going to go up. I, I'm, I'm not saying anything about decreasing when I'm talking about parking lots, and I think three or four of us are trying to make that clear. I do think you've under-projected the behavior of parking lot use, even though you just, it's twenty-five percent. I do think it's going to change, especially if they're living in Manhattan. Anywhere in Manhattan, it'll only take you fifteen minutes to drop somebody off. So I fear we're still over-projecting on a revenue, depending on what it is. I'm not sure the people of Manhattan are going to pay more than three dollars. At max, they might pay five, but most of them are probably just going to drop them off. That's where I see the behavior changing. It may not be from Uber, but most people have a friend or two or an employee or somebody that's going to just drop them off. And we think, well, two dollars, three dollars, it doesn't make a big difference, people don't see it. But it's amazing how many people make a decision when they see gas prices with a penny off from one gas station to a next, thinking they're going to save a whole lot of money and they're only saving like twenty cents maybe. But that's how the mind works, that's, that's human nature. So I have, I'm not against the parking lot improvements, it's always the funding source that we're concerned about. So that's where I'm at. I don't want us to, if we don't meet projections, our taxpayers will end up paying it, not only our taxpayers now, but in the future because of maintenance. Maintenance always takes up more money than we, than we think because price goes up on all of that construction and all the materials that are being used. So I'm just very concerned about how you're going, how we're going to pay for this. I'm, I'm not in favor of five or seven dollars. I, I, I don't know what that looks like, and unless we can figure it out, I can't say okay to parking lot improvements because we just need them and we'll figure out a way to pay for it. I'm not, I'm not inclined to do that right now. And I, like I said, I think the twenty percent is, or twenty, twenty-five percent is a very low projection as far as behavior use in, in our parking lot system, if there's a fee attached.
Just real quickly, I'm on board with paying for parking. I think the whole reason we ask for you to do this extra work is to provide some data on which we can make base decisions. So I appreciate you bringing that here with some, both some national projections and some algorithms that have been used. So kind of in the same place that Commissioner Butler is on this, I think this is one of those areas where the people who use the facility ought to pay for it and it should not go on the general taxpayer across the entire city. And so I'm with you, and I think the only thing, Jesse, I'd ask you to do is maybe give us some projections based upon the number of employments to parking slot requirements. So if we're at five eighty-three now based upon sixty-seven thousand flights a year, you know, what does that mean in terms of a trend if we go to seventy or seventy-five? What does that mean in terms, and we can apply the five percent or whatever it is degradation to lost parking as a result of fees? I mean, that's another data point we can look at, but I, I think we're about there.
I'd like to just talk a little bit about the runway replacement and about how much our ten percent of that will cost us estimate.
Yeah, that's what it is at this point, is, is a, is a pretty big estimate. I was trying to see if I had it in this slide or not. I don't have cost estimates here with me. Some of that's going to be driven by what is determined through this planning study. So there's pretty wide variance on the full depth reconstruct that would be required, what type of technique would we use?
And the length that eventually?
Yeah, and the, and the phasing and if we, as part of phasing, do lengthen and stage it in such a way, it's all going to drive the cost. So it is really hard to predict what the total construction or reconstruction of that runway was going to be right now. There's an estimated number, I think, in CIP somewhere, but we can get to you later. But again, it's a big estimate.
Yeah. Is there any other big project with regard to the run, to the airport besides the parking and the runway replacement that we'll be facing into the future?
Not that we have on our current radar scope, no.
Well, the runway is a higher priority for me than the parking. And you're not planning to have the runway completed until 2021. I just would prefer to kick this down the curb a while until we get further able to, you know, we've been doing that, obviously, kicking it down the road, not engaging with paid parking, and our, our citizens have benefited from that because we've been really conservative in the approach. And so I have been an advocate of, of paid parking. After the parking lot is paid for with the bonds and we have, where does the money go for the, the, you know, let's say it takes twelve years, bond, to actually pay for the parking lot? Where does the money go that comes in from the paid parking from then on? Is that just into the general airport revenue pot?
That becomes airport revenue, yes.
Uh huh, okay. Is, that's why I wondered if there are any other big ticket items that are looming. Because I like having, I, I'm really proud of our little airport. I don't necessarily consider it small anymore, it's grown a lot, but, and I don't want to disadvantage or give people a bad impression, but I don't think the parking lot is the biggest deal out there. I think our I think our air service and our, the air services we provide are the most important thing we can support there. So, anyway. But I think I'm less inclined to approve seven, I'm not, not supporting like seven-dollar parking or the higher end of that at all. I could probably, I'd only, probably drag me kicking and screaming down the road to five-dollar. But, anyway. Are there any other comments? Do you have any other comments, Andy? Mark?
Well, I just want to know, what is the timeline we're looking at? When do we have to make a decision on this?
So what I heard was a desire to develop that timeline further based on this opportunity for the FAA grant, and Jesse's going to do some research on that and communicate with them about various options and submittal, and hopefully, we'll find out more information about their timeline. That's something we've been waiting on. It's kind of like the opportunity zones that the administration established, and we're still waiting on the rules for the opportunity zones to be developed by the feds. So that really, I think, is what I hear is a decision factor, and then kind of going from there based on what that grant submission and anticipated award notice timeline would be.
And I do agree with Mayor Morris, I think the runway, if that's going to happen during that interim, it's going to impact parking. So I would like to see that happen before we go on much deeper into this conversation. But I'm sure that's going to come up once you do the funding and see how, what happens with the FAA and all of that.
The only additional thing, the fees, if we pay for parking with parking fees, these are not competing projects. The runway will be bonded.
So this?
The parking lot will be paid from parking fees if we go down this road. The airport will, the airport runway will not.
And runway, the runway project will impact employments at all? You're going to be able to fly the same number of flights, that's, I think that's what maybe Commissioner Ready and Mayor Morris are getting at, is if the runway project affects employments, then it's going to affect the amount of revenue we're generating for parking.
Part of the point of the planning study is to evaluate all the phasing options of construction to help mitigate the disruption to air service. So I can't accurately predict how it will impact air service.
When is that planning phase done, again?
It's, I think next week is the kickoff meeting, and it's a twelve-month process.
I think that's a pretty important factor to consider.
And again, this is not a situation that's unique. Nationally, the airlines and adjust to airports like us, they have a single runway go under or reconstruct. So we've talked to the airline too, and gave them heads up, we've continued to talk with them about that. So there's alternatives with what they can do too, so that's why I said it's hard for me to predict what the outcome will be, because a lot of it is dependent too upon their flexibility and what they do as well.
Got it.
Do you see a scenario where you would not want to accept the grant in favor of rather using the pay-for, pay-for-parking scenario?
Go ahead.
I would say yes, there's, you know, if the grant comes back with too many strings attached that says, you know, we're only going to do a third of your lot, that makes it very difficult for us in the future to have a reasonable program, that something is going to be free. Now, the one thing that, you know, might work, although I heard a good argument against it, would be if you did all the disabled or some kind of temporary space that was free and everything else that was, long-term parking was charging. So there may be a scenario, but as Jesse says, that challenge is, you know, are you limiting yourself in that submittal, and would they, would they accept something like that? So those are, you know, we're, I think we're, we'll be lucky to get high enough on their funding priority, because parking's always the lowest priority, and it's anticipated to be a revenue stream for airports. So that's why it's so low on the priority list for grant funding. But we can have communications and try and look that out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're adjourned.